Good evening. Welcome to this candidates forum for the Dobbs Ferry School Board. My name is Susan Machiato and I'm the president of the League of Women Voters of the River Towns. I welcome our three candidates tonight for the two open seats on the board. Dr. Rebecca Hirschberg, Dr. Pavitra Nagarajan, and Antonio Treglia. Election Day is Tuesday, May 16th. Voting is in the high school gym from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And there is voter registration tomorrow, Monday, May 8th, from 3:30 to 7:30. Our timekeeper tonight is Susan Schwartz, a member of the River Towns League and a resident of Terrytown. I will be the moderator tonight, and in keeping with league policy, I am not a voter in this district. Just a word about the League of Women Voters. We are a nonpartisan organization in that we do not support or oppose candidates or political parties, but we do work to increase understanding of public policy issues, and we seek to influence public policy through education and advocacy. Membership in the league is open to anyone 16 years of age or older. A word about our recording policy that all the candidates have agreed to. Only the entities authorized by the league may record or livestream this forum. Only licensed media, which includes TV, radio, and newspapers, are entitled by FCC regulations to air portions of the recording. Anyone else who broadcasts or streams the recording must do so in its entirety. This is to ensure that the content of the forum will not be manipulated in any way to create faults or misleading impressions of any candidate. The forum will be recorded and available for later viewing. There will be links on the River Towns League website and Facebook page to the location on YouTube. And now let's go over the ground rules for tonight. The order of opening statements has been determined by lots that were drawn prior to this meeting. And the order of closing statements will be in reverse order. The order in which the candidates will respond to questions will be rotated by the moderator to ensure fairness. Throughout the forum, no comments of a personal or abusive nature, of course, will be permitted. I will rule these out of order. Each candidate will have one minute for the opening statement and one and a half minutes to answer each question. Our timekeeper will indicate when 30 seconds are left and then again when time is up. You will be allowed, candidates will be allowed to finish their sentence, but then please stop. Candidates are allowed to rebuttals during the course of the forum of 30 seconds each. They will just raise their hand to indicate they'd like to make a rebuttal. At the conclusion, each candidate will then have one minute for a closing statement. As moderator, I reserve the right to allow a 30-second rebuttal if warranted by the content of any closing statement. Now, there is no audience participation or questioning live during this webinar tonight. The questions the candidates will be answering were all submitted by members of the Dobbs Ferry community, either when they registered for the forum or by email to the league. A committee of league and PTSA members met yesterday to review the questions. Our role was simply to organize them according to topic. In some cases, we combined questions or cleared up the language a little bit in order to include as many of the questions as possible. I would like to thank the PTSA for their help in this and in publicizing the forum. Now, let us begin with opening statements. Mr. Treglia, you are first.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you to the League of Women Voters of the River Towns and the PTSA for conducting the Zoom call. I believe that this is a crucial time in our district because as a parent of three young children, I want to make sure that the superintendent has a supportive and balanced board and will be able to maintain his focus on educational excellence. During last year's BOE run, I emphasized that there was a lack of instruction in reading and writing, hiring practices, and lack of quality professional development. It appears per the current budget and through the superintendent's communications with our district, we, there, there will be a new reading and writing program that starts next year. Reevaluation of the hiring practices and targeted professional learning for faculty and staff in priority areas. I have been in Cal for 19 years and I specialize in audit and taxation. Here in Dobbs Ferry, we pay a lot for our taxes, and I know how to make sure our tax dollars are allocated to educational excellence, quality professional development, and as a former Division One athlete, that our athletic clubs are properly funded. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Hirschberg.
Thank you. Thanks to the league and to Mr. Treglia and Dr. Nagarajan and the PTSA and everyone spending time watching this evening or later on video. I think it's a show of your devotion and how much we all care about the district. I am a mother of two kids in Springhurst. We moved to Dobbs about nine years ago, and I'm so invested in this community and excited to be running for the Board of Ed. I think I'm uniquely suited to this moment in time as a clinical psychologist because the mental health of our students, of our children and adolescents is more important than ever with raising rates of anxiety, depression, substance use. I think the dichotomy that is sometimes drawn between education and academics and mental health and feelings of safety and security is a false one. I think kids need to feel safe and secure and understood and heard and respected in order to learn. And I believe that having my voice on the board as someone who can really continue to think about how to integrate those things rather than continually view them as opposing is essential. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Nagarajan.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today, and thanks to the fellow candidates for joining as well and for all of you joining at home or wherever you may be. I'm eager to share today why I would make an excellent candidate for the board. I'm an educator. I was founding teacher and leader of a New York City public school. I deeply understand the day-to-day realities of classrooms and know that students need to feel physically and emotionally safe, cared for, and have their identities embraced in order to take academic risks, thrive, and experience the joys of schooling. I'm an educational researcher. I earned my PhD in sociology and education at Columbia University Teachers College. I have expertise in school policy, culture, and curriculum, and I'm eager to bring this to the board. I know that schools are stronger when they champion diversity, inclusion, justice, and equity. I'm an organizer. I've co-chaired the National March for Public Education in 2017 when federal policies threatened historically marginalized students and their rights to learn. I'm eager to be a champion of our students as well. I'm a person of color. If elected, I'm excited to increase diverse representation on the board and to better reflect the community. I'm a mother, most importantly, my toddlers are future Springhurst students, and I'm committed to ensuring the district is a place where we are all proud to send our children. Thank you for your consideration. I look forward to the conversation.
Thank you. And now we'll start with our first question, and we'll keep in the same order for the first question. So this is for Mr. Treglia. What do you see as the primary work of the Board of Education? How does the role and responsibility of board members differ from that of the superintendent?
Thank you for your question. The primary focus which I see as a board member is to really support the superintendent and to be an advocate for community members that voted us in. The superintendent and the administration creates the policies which presented to the board. As a member of the board, we review the policies, look it over, and ask tough questions, and which we should be asking tough questions to them to make sure that the community and also to represent our fellow members of the community to make sure that we receive input from them as well, to make sure the school is in line with the policies as well as within the community. And as a member of the Board of Ed, I would be a strong advocate for transparency within the community as well as more than willing to support the superintendent and to ensure educational excellence is adhered to. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Hirschberg.
Will you repeat the question, please?
What do you see as the primary work of the Board of Education? And how does the role and responsibility of board members differ from that of the superintendent?
So I would say the role of the board is exactly like, you know, Mr. Treglia just described, is to really be a liaison between the community and the superintendent and administration. The superintendent, I think, needs the board certainly to approve and ask the tough questions, which I think was well said, to make sure that the community interests are being represented. The superintendent also has way more expertise in education and educational policy and hires administrators who can certainly support his vision, but it's up to the board to make sure that that vision and those policies and the implementation of those policies are in keeping with a community that it represents and to make sure that it's not just sort of the loudest people that are represented in these policies, but rather that we are voted in to really keep in mind who our constituents are and what they want and what they need. I also think that transparency is essential, and I think the board members, particularly those of us who have parents in the school system, I'm sorry, children in the school system, perhaps a Freudian slip, and my parents should be in, no kidding, who have children in the school system can also speak as members of the community themselves, so can point out when a policy or procedure feels as though it is perhaps not being well communicated or not taking into account parental and community feedback and to really kind of push for those lines to remain open in terms of communication and certainly keeping in mind, you know, fiscal responsibility as well.
Thank you. Dr. Nagarajan, would you like me to repeat the question?
Sure.
What do you see as the primary work of the Board of Education? And how does that role and responsibility differ from that of the superintendent?
Great. Well, I think that the board is a number of elected individuals that we hope to make sure are representing the community as best as we can. And I think that's a big responsibility, and I think what comes with that is making sure we're listening, making ourselves available to folks to be able to communicate any concerns, questions, needs that are not being well-served by the schools or could be served better by the schools. Superintendent is, of course, a very important position in our schools, but I think the board acts as a way of checks and balances both between the superintendent and with the board. Since we're all kind of governing democratically with respect to enacting policies or anything like that within the schools. I think that the board can serve as a sounding board as well for superintendent. Having been in education for a long time, I know that superintendency can be a little bit of a lonely position. So I think being able to have a very supportive board that's able to kind of relay concerns that are standing up from the community and standing up from the schools themselves and hear from a different perspective, I think the role is to have a constructive dialogue to that degree. I agree with all that's really been said here. I think more or less we are all on the same page with that kind of partnership element of it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Dr. Hirschberg. What Board of Education committees do you hope to serve on? And how will they best utilize your particular skills and experiences?
That's an excellent question. As of now, I'm most interested, I believe, in the policy committee as well as the curriculum committee. I think both are areas where having a voice who really understands children's social emotional development and the extent to which children's social emotional development is foundational to learning and academic learning. I think both of those committees really would benefit from that. I think the policies that we enact as individual schools, as a district, really need to reflect, as I said, an understanding which the science actually really supports, that there's no such thing anymore. The same thing, there's, the same reason we, excuse me, in the same way that we know there's no kind of nature versus nurture. We also know there's no academic learning versus feelings of safety and security. We know that you need the feelings of safety and security for all students, feeling like they are accepted, feeling as though people around them are kind and inclusive and understand their perspectives and value their perspectives. You need that in order to have academic learning. And so I think our policies need to reflect that as well as our curriculum. Our curriculum in terms of learning, again, is not just about academics. I'm a tremendous fan of academics. I am by no means saying I'm soft on reading, writing, or math. I'm saying that we know that those things are not in opposition to the more emotional side of learning or learning from diverse perspectives or learning from people who have diverse perspectives and experiences. Thanks.
Thank you. Dr. Nagarajan.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Sure. What Board of Education committees do you hope to serve on? And how will they best utilize your particular skills and experiences?
Great. My experiences, I, as I mentioned, I've been an educator for a number of years. I've worked in schools. I've also been a curriculum specialist, and my degree is from the Education Policy and Social Analysis Department. So I've done a lot of work in education policy as well. So in particular, I am kind of with Dr. Hirschberg, so maybe we would serve together, policy and the curriculum committees. Particular policy, I do have a background in things that have been tried across the US in terms of particular types of policies at the school level and to different degrees of success. I think that the policies are really what undergird what is possible in a school building and the curriculum in addition to other things, but the curriculum in particular is what ensures what gets to be possible. And so as someone who has been able to design curriculum with both rigor balanced, with both rigor balanced, with inclusion, diversity, those things are the way in which you accomplish rigor. So I believe that we need to ensure that we're including diverse voices, diverse regions, diversity in all senses of the word. I think that students, and I know that students grow stronger in their academics and their interpersonal awareness with other kids if they're actually able to interact with perspectives that are different than their own because then they're able to actually learn what they believe and what they think. So to that end, I would be really interested in joining both of those committees. I've also been someone who worked as a community organizer. I think I'd be someone well-suited to working with community relations as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Treglia, what committees do you hope to serve on? And how will they best utilize your skills and experiences?
Well, one of the current board members who is no longer seeking to another term, he has more of a financial background. And to my, to my knowledge, I don't believe anybody else does have a financial background as on that board currently. So I think it's imperative to have a diverse board with different backgrounds on the board to be able to ensure that we have the whole, the whole district covered in different aspects. So for me personally, I would be more interested in the audit committee or the plans and facilities committee, as a lot of that has to deal with back, a financial background, which I'm more than suited. I also am currently on another educational institution. And I also, so I know the functions of the boards and how to support the superintendent and the current administration, who I believe they're the ones who should be setting the curriculum and the policies pertaining to the curriculum so that, and then us as a collective unit would review and come to a consensus with different ideas, different backgrounds, and that's how, I believe, good policy gets made. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with.
Can I do a rebuttal on that question?
Rebuttal, sure.
Thanks. I'm sorry, that's 30 seconds, correct?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. I just wanted to note that as someone who has earned a PhD, I know Dr. Hirschberg, of course, has earned a PhD as well, given her honorific. I'm someone, and we are both people who have interacted with numbers and data quite a bit in order to get our degrees we had to. So I'm someone who works as a data scientist in the day-to-day, so really used to looking at numbers and budgets and things like that, especially for the grants that I manage. So I just wanted to note that, that, you know, despite not having, you know, an MBA or a financial job with that, I would be well-suited to be able to do this, and I know Dr. Hirschberg as well has the skills to do so as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Dr. Nagarajan, the next question is for you. What do you see as the major issue or issues facing the district?
Thank you. I think there are many opportunities here, so I think of them as opportunities. One, I think that we need to continue to make sure that our schools are safe places for students to learn. I think of safety in a number of ways, physical safety, emotional safety, and the safety that students feel enough to take academic risks and thrive. And I think that can only be accomplished when inclusion and equity, diversity, and justice are at the center of what is done in schools. Academics is obviously the center of schooling, but diversity, inclusion, justice, and equity are the principles that should guide that work. And if we do that well, then students are able to learn well and are able to be well-prepared for colleges, careers. I know this from my own work in thinking about curriculum and instruction, and I know that that is probably the most important thing that's facing our students. And as a parent, I know that I, at the end of the day, I know I want my child to be safe. I want my child to feel like they can be curious and experience the joys of learning. I want to know that they are going to be challenged to both academically, intellectually, and interact with people with perspectives different than their own. I want them to know how to engage and construct a dialogue with others who may disagree with them, but to know how to have a civil conversation and to be able to learn from each other and to also garner support for their own viewpoints. I believe that schools should be a really enjoyable place to be, both for teachers and for students. And I believe that school culture and shoring that up as much as we possibly can to create a community for our students is the most important thing and likely will always be the most important thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Treglia. What do you see as the major issue or issues facing the district?
The major issues I see are, I think bullying has become a big problem within our district and within the community as a whole. For the past, for the past couple of years, I've been advocating to try to bring the community back together. We used to be a society where we used to be able to agree to disagree and still remain cordial, respectful of each other, but it's come to a point where, as long as you have one, you, for the most part, we all can agree that, you know, education is and the safety of our children is most important. But the second, there is one pillar of the movement, it's become, you become an outcast within, within the school, within the community. So I believe, I believe parents do better within, with it, as a teacher as well. And then also, see, there's a big vaping, from what I'm hearing, vaping, the smoke issue within this, which I believe definitely needs to do more as these kids are smoking more and being through some of the school functions where they're showing the products they're doing and from anything like a chopstick to UAB stick, and they were, and from what I hear, the schools, the bathrooms are becoming a really bad part. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Treglia, your sound is getting a little corrupted. Perhaps you can make sure that other people in your household are not using the internet right now. That might help. You can sleep with it while we answer the next question. Dr. Hirschberg, you're going to answer the same question. What do you see as the major issue or issues facing the school district?
Thank you. I want to start by just saying what our motto as a school district is, which is independent thinkers change worlds. And so I think our priority is and has been and should continue to be to develop independent thinkers who change worlds. And I think when we think really clearly about how to do that, what are the pathways? We need, as my, you know, fellow candidates seem to agree, absolutely 100% a setting in which everyone feels safe to have their independent viewpoint and to be who they are with regard to identity, whether that is in terms of their belief system, their religion, their ethnicity, their race, their gender, their sexual and gender orientation, identity. I don't understand how one can have a conversation about bullying without, in the same breath, having a conversation about diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives. I believe that, again, for each student to feel respected and heard and be able to think independently and read and ask questions and go out to change the world, it's a scary, scary place for kids right now. And they need to be thinking creatively and in innovative ways, the way that we grown-ups, or at least I not, can't necessarily do anymore. They need to be at their best to do that, and kids are only at their best when they are a community that supports each other 100% in all that we are.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Treglia. Do you support the 5.07% school budget increase? And going forward, what changes, if any, would you like to see or would you allocate any funds differently?
As a taxpayer, I don't, I don't appreciate the 5% increase. And this is, this has been the biggest increase in over 10 years. But I also do realize that the rate of inflation, gas, utility prices are affecting many in the community. So it's tough to swallow for a lot of residents, but it's also tough, I know, for the school because their costs have increased as well. But I do see that there is plenty of room for improvement. I also believe that a lot of parents in the district are paying out of pocket to support some of the athletics that their kids are doing because that are, that are shipped to other schools that they have a collective groups because they're not in many, there's not enough for one team. So there's their shared services, and I know a lot of parents are sharing those costs. And then also, it would be nice if the district puts out a little bit more detailed budget so we can further analyze the cost drivers of some of the smaller budget line items as these are mostly overlooked because they may appear to be immaterial, but in aggregate, they could be, they add up to be a lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Hirschberg.
Thank you. Am I still not on mute? Yes, okay. Forgot to mute myself. So our taxes are very, very high in our district. I think we know that, and I think it's really a bummer. And unfortunately, it's due to factors we can't control. We have so many nonprofits here in Dobbs Ferry compared to the neighboring villages that don't pay taxes. And we have many, many apartments and condominiums, and so standalone homes pay an unfair burden of taxes. That said, although the school, the school is asking for a larger amount of money than they have in, let's say, 10 years, however, individual tax rates are not going up. The proportion is going up. The dollar amount may be going up if your home has been appraised at a higher value than in the past, but the rate for an individual person, a percentage for an individual person is not going up. That said, I am in agreement with the budget that the board put together because they are asking for an increase to support the programming that we already have merely to continue to support the existing staff and funding and program that we have. Oh, okay, thank you. That was confusing. They need to increase the budget, and then the, so my understanding is that part of it is because of inflation and cost of living to keep what we have, and then part of it is to increase services for students with disabilities and special needs. That is the right thing to do. It is also the fiscally responsible thing to do because if we can't meet the students' needs in our district, we do what's called an outplacement, and an outplacement for one student can cost up to $150,000. So clearly, raising the budget was the right decision and the responsible one, and I'm in support of it.
Thank you. Dr. Nagarajan.
I too support the budget. I echo a lot of the things that have been driving this increase that the other candidates have mentioned. As Mr. Treglia mentioned, inflation, as Dr. Hirschberg mentioned, you know, are the overall per thousand-dollar cost for folks, the rate is actually going down. Unfortunately, you know, that may not necessarily mean that that is what's going to happen. I too own a home, and I find that it's going to be, it's going to be tough. But I also know that the work of teaching and learning is hard work, and I know that it requires money to be able to accomplish it well. In particular, I agree with the way that this, these funds are being spent, especially as Dr. Hirschberg mentioned, for students with disabilities. I think that being able to provide a quality education is a human right, and I think being able to do that for all students that attend our district is just necessary. And I agree that the financial cost to us is much larger if we're actually sending them out of district and doing an outplacement. So in particular, I think that I agree with everything that's been kind of proposed here. I think professional learning, as Mr. Treglia mentioned earlier, was kind of an interest in being able to show up a little bit more this year in this year's budget. And I think teachers do better when we invest in them, so finding ways to do that, especially in this budget, is a really good opportunity. Additionally, as I understand, a lot of the programming that was put in place last year and the year before were covered through COVID funds as we are now not receiving as a district. So being able to find ways to continue programming that began during that time is very important, especially given some of the academic gains that we want students to be making this year after, after some COVID academics. Thanks.
Thank you. The next question is for Dr. Hirschberg. In light of the potential for school shootings and other violence, do you think additional measures are needed to ensure that students, faculty, and staff feel safe in the school environment?
I'm thinking, I want to be thoughtful about this question and not. I'm I'm think I want to be thoughtful about this question and not. Um, make it about additional measures that might be taken outside of our schools and and politically so that this is no longer the threat. That it is, uh, which is certainly where I would devote some of my time, but um. Given the threat that it is, do I think we need additional measures? I think it's a balance frankly between really. Thousand percent ensuring that our children are physically safe. And using evidence based research to determine that, right? What are the methods of keeping children safe that have actually been shown to be effective when these horrific things have happened? Um, there is more and more unfortunately, because we needed research suggesting that there are particular measures that are helpful and particular measures. That are not. And so I would be very interested as a member of the board to do some real investigation into which of those. We are implementing that are necessary and have been shown to be helpful and which are not. If we are looking for places to potentially cut spending frankly, I'm tremendously concerned about physical safety. I'm also very concerned about emotional. Safety and I want to be very, very thoughtful about how we frame drills to our students. I want to be very thoughtful when our wonderful police force show up to the schools as I know they often do. Let's say a child's having a medical emergency. Um, I want to be really thoughtful about how to communicate that to students, how to communicate that to parents. To keep in mind, I'll just wrap up, I see the time, but to keep in mind the emotional safety and the fallout that can come. From living in a climate where this is such an ongoing and important.
Thank you. Dr. Nagarajan, do you think additional measures are needed to ensure safety? A feeling of safety?
Sure, additional measures, I have a similar reaction to the question as Dr. Hirschberg. I, as a parent, I know we all want our kids to be safe and. I am concerned when I think about sending them to school every single day, as I know many of us are. I, you know, I certainly think that we need to consider what makes kids safe at school. And how, where where these violent incidents are coming from. As someone who researches specifically school safety, I. Really consider this question a lot in my day to day work when we think about the research base and about what makes. Students safe, I in particular, if I were elected to the board, I'd be curious to understand a little bit more about the security measures. That are being proposed as part of the budget to keep our students safe and to ensure that these are the effective measures. I would also uh, consider how we can invest in programs, for example, such as conflict resolution. A lot of our students don't get to have those types of opportunities to be able to talk with others and figure out other ways. Resolving conflict, but also in talking to others and having a supportive person at school. To which, to whom they can go to and speak with if they have any issues. Also, any type of near peer type of mentoring can also be helpful in this place. So I'm trying to think here too about how do we. To speak to that kind of safety issue, how do we make sure that students are able to talk about the things that are bothering them, resolve conflicts that they may be having? And anything like that, so they're actually able to go to school in a place that's ever, that's safe every day and how do we create the community that we are, that we so. So much want to protect. Um, so I think about those kinds of programming as well. So in the way that if we can include those types of programming, I believe that that would help. Quite a bit.
Thank you. Mr. Traglia.
I think uh, I think this school has been doing a very good job at uh. At updating the safety procedures and and policies. Through the past couple of years, there are definitely rooms of improvement that uh, that I've noticed that could be. Improved on. Um, for instance, when we, for Springer, they created the security booth uh, at the main entrance. And the security booth that is completely um, bulletproof. But the doors next to that. Are not. So, you know, it's great, you have safety for the security and they should have it. But the stores right next to the security booth are not bulletproof, so we should probably kind of look like, look at something like that. Um, whether it be the the film to the film that you put on the windows to make it um. Bulletproof and then also a lot of the windows in classrooms on the lower level are the same, is kind of like the same situation. Those windows aren't bulletproof and those doors aren't bulletproof. So I think something like that, you know, we. As a member of the board that I would um, advocate to try and see to make sure there's, it's limited access. All around, not just in certain areas. And then also, also tag along the the drills, how they. How they promote the drills for um. The safety measures as well that, you know, a lot, from what I'm hearing, some of the kids have been getting a little nervous about um, the way they have been going. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next question, we'll start with Dr. Nagarajan. How do you define?
Dr. Hirschberg had, she was raising her hands.
Okay, we're good. Great.
Um, okay, ready.
How do you, how do you define diversity and do you believe that diversity in the DOP schools is important and if so, why?
Great, well, I define diversity as thinking about the pluralism of our society, considering all the different perspectives. Um, and histories that kind of come into our being and how we approach everyday living. Um, so I consider that inclusion of those perspectives, what diversity is. Diversity in lots of different ways as well, right? We think about. Where, you know, our ethnicity is, our race, um, socioeconomic diversity, I think about gender or age, um, gender identity. Sexual orientation, diversity of who we kind of come to school as if we're thinking about students and teachers, diversity in that way. Um, I think about it that way. Um, so I think that diversity is extremely important. I'm someone who has done a lot of DEI. Diversity, equity and inclusion trainings. I'm someone who has done a lot of this work and I think it's very important. To do in schools with students, but also with teachers and community with them. Um, I am in increasingly concerned about making sure we are doing curriculum with a DEI lens. So considering ways in which that we are um, ensuring that students have an ability to see people, see. Stories of themselves reflected in what they are learning, but to also make sure that they are reading from a diversity of perspectives, of voices. Um, of time periods of all those kinds of things. And I think doing so is what makes us better learners. The research supports this. Um, including making sure we are actually reading and learning from different, different folks, different stories. Makes us better learners, better thinkers, better academics as we grow up. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Traglia. How do you define diversity and do you believe that diversity in the DOP schools is important and if so, why?
I believe diversity is the inclusion of different. Diversity, um, genders as well as orientations. DEI is meant to make all of our students feel welcome and properly represented. Empowering our students with this knowledge of acceptance and understanding is an important framework and I envision that as times change. Our schools will change to evolve with this change. Make our district, making sure our district vets and hires the best people to convey these messages among our teachers and staff is incredibly crucial. To the well being of our students. I've done a lot of research in the past years and uh, understand that the uh, the DA policy. Is to make everyone feel safe and welcome, in which I wholeheartedly agree. What must be done is to avoid the narrative of our politically divided world. We do not need to redefine terms in order to achieve our goals. A lot of the terms feed into a narrative confrontation and they don't necessarily bring people on board, but rather divide the community. We, we do need to care for one another and recognize the good in one another and come back to a point where we are able to agree to disagree. And still remain respectful amongst all students, classmates, teachers and neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Hirschberg.
Thank you. I just want to call attention to something I just heard, which is somehow in the discussion of DEI that. The hiring of the best uh, people for a position might somehow be sacrificed, which is a myth or certainly a trope that gets circulated a lot. I don't think anybody would argue that we need the absolute best teachers and administrators in our district. I would also suggest that in order for our kids to really learn at their highest capacity, we need to. Help people with differing perspectives if our slogan is going to continue to be independent thinkers who change worlds. You cannot have an independent thinker or someone who goes out to change the world unless that person really understands different perspectives. And feel safe in their own identity and perspective as they're doing that learning. So I really want to be clear that that embracing DEI initiatives does not mean sacrificing the quality. Of people that we would hire, the quality of books we would read, the quality of the curriculum that we would embrace. I also think it's tremendously important here to repeat that to me, DEI is the other side of the coin of bullying. If there is a tremendously difficult problem we have with bullying or frankly, as I heard in another response with, let's say, vaping or substance use. All of these things are correlated with people, children and adolescents not feeling accepted. Not feeling a part of their community, not feeling seen, not feeling heard, not feeling safe. And so if we want bullying to decrease, if we want our kids to feel safer and learn better, then DEI is a part of that mission.
Thank you. The next question is for Mr. Traglia and it's uh, related to what we just talked about. What are your views on hiring a more diverse faculty?
My views on hiring diversity, to me, it doesn't matter who gets hired, right? Um, they, I. Every, the stipulation is, you know, there's, there's no hires, it's. Hiring is not based on race, color, religion, creed or whatnot, so. If, if, if we're not hiring the most qualified, then our teacher salaries should be going down, not up. Um, because uh, in the past couple of years, we have been losing a lot of, a lot of good teachers. And um, I've done the research, I foiled a bunch of new hires that have been coming into the district and. It, it appears that the hiring was not. At the level that we should be. I think as a, as a person who gets hired in the district, I think the minimum requirement should be that. They are tenured, right? Um, if we want to start hiring based on diversity. Um, then we should set up a, a program that we can start developing these, these teachers from this. From the schools, you know, we have to start thinking outside the box. We can't just think, okay, we have to hire this person or that person. That's not, that's not fair to, to anybody and that's not fair to the children. Um, if we wanna, if we want to do better, we should strive to achieve better and make policies. To help people come along. Um, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Hirschberg, what are your views on hiring a more diverse faculty?
I'm a hundred percent in favor of it, full stop. Um, I will. Use the rest of my time to say that I believe I just heard the phrase, these teachers. Um, to reference teachers who might come from more diverse backgrounds that somehow they would need separate. Programs, I'm not sure that's correct. I think if the issue is how do we attract and retain. Uh, teachers who might come from differing backgrounds because our community has not always been embracing of that or understood how complicated. The process can be, then absolutely. Um. I think a diverse faculty can only serve our students well. Period.
You finished?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Dr. Nagarajan.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Sure. What are your views on hiring a more diverse faculty?
Great. I too am in favor of this. I agree a hundred percent. Um, I, I, I'm the person on thing on this, this forum here today who has been a teacher in the classroom. I know that students can learn from a variety of perspectives and are not being presented with those perspectives. They're not, they're simply just not going to be able to expand their worldview. In certain ways. Um, I agree that teachers who are qualified need to be in front of our students. I think that those. Folks, people who are qualified um, are not restricted to any one type of person, um, or one type of. Um, described characteristic, for example, race, socioeconomic status, region, et cetera. Um, sexual orientation, I believe that we need to create our schools as a microcosm. Of a larger society and that to do that, we need to consider what types of voices are being put in front of our students. What type of life experience are being put in front of our students? How do they feel that they can connect to different teachers? Looking like your students is not the only way to connect to your teacher. So ensuring that there are different ways that students can do that. Is very important to me. Um, I also just want to note that. Hiring diverse teachers doesn't mean you are sacrificing in any one area. Um, as someone who's a person of color myself, which is not highly represented in the teaching workforce, I just want to note that as someone who. Has been highly educated and has been in front of students, I want to note that. That does not mean you are sacrificing anything at all. And in fact, much of the research demonstrates that you are gaining quite a bit. To be able to have students um, in service, um, in community with teachers who are from various diverse backgrounds. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will start with Dr. Hirschberg. Oh, yes, Mr. Traglia.
Just like the, a little bit of rebuttal. I wasn't saying anything of, when I was saying these teachers, I meant. All teachers that were hired. I wasn't referring to a certain, a certain background, uh, race or anything. I was, I had to foil. All teach, all new hires, so it didn't, it wasn't just referring to one certain um, background. Uh, uh, but my main thing is, is that we shouldn't be, my main focus is that we should not be sacrificing. Quality. That's, that's my main focus. So um, and uh.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Hirschberg, the next question. What more do you think our district could be doing to address the mental health crisis among children and teens?
I think that there are evidence based initiatives and I keep that focus on evidence based, right? We're not reinventing the wheel here and so much of this isn't about opinion. Of course, we need to weigh in as parents and. Community members of what we feel we want to do and what's important, but there are many communities struggling with these same issues. And there have been extraordinary research studies done on the type of programming that works to help with these increased rates of anxiety, depression, substance use. Um, to name just a few. And so I believe that community building is very, very important. A predictive factor of children's resilience, even in the face of stressors, is their connection to one adult. So making sure that each person in the community of students has an adult with whom they feel safe and comfortable. That might be another reason frankly, to look at hiring diverse teachers as a priority. Because kids really want and need and thrive when they can connect with an adult. Who is like them and understands what they are going through. I think making sure that. We are addressing all of our students' families and involving them as much as possible. That means. Um, sending communications in different languages and really making sure that families are, that the communication is transparent. I think having levels of screening, so first tier, second tier and third tier, there's a lot of research suggesting that not, the playing field is not equal. Thank you, in terms of what different students need and so making sure programming addresses that.
Thank you. Dr. Nagarajan, what more do you think our district could be doing to address the mental health crisis among children and teens?
Um, I agree with um, a lot of what Dr. Hirschberg has said. I know she is an expert in this field, so I agree in. Drawing from the evidence based here, evidence base here, um, drawing from my own research, I agree with the, then. Um, what she shared here about drawing connections with other significant adults in the school that, or other, other peers. That is someone that really increases a sense of inclusion and belongingness in schools that can really help. Quite a bit with mental health for adolescents. Uh, my own research supports this. I think that's something that we need to think about is how do we make. Mental health services legible and accessible to families and to guardians and things like that, making sure that folks are able to access the services. Also communicating with families to understand what things to look out for. Or I think this is a huge point. We, we know when our kids are off, a lot of the point, but a lot of the times. But we may not know the consequences or the things to always look out for, especially because they are growing and changing every single day. And I know that when they go into a school building, there are lots of things that they are dealing with, is a whole world. So being able to understand just a little bit from experts. Um, the communication that's coming in from the school, what's going on with our students and what we should be looking out for. So there's better, so we're all on the same page and we're working as a team to be able to make sure we are supporting our students as best as we can. Um, I also believe that, you know, these issues are huge and in every community, as Dr. Hirschberg mentioned. Anxiety, depression, all of these things are increasing. We know that social media use is definitely something as well. I think having some type of. Education, thank you, around how to appropriately and uh, materially use that, that type of work is would also be very important is something I would support.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Traglia, what more do you think the district could be doing uh, to address the mental health crisis among children and teens?
Well, I believe that, that the mental health should be at the forefront and having our students feel safe and secure is imperative uh, for a successful education. Um, which also uh, in partnership with uh, parents, um, I take a, a lot of people forget that. A lot of, from what I've been hearing, that there's been. the parents have been leaving, been leaving, being left out of the conversation. So I, I, I truly believe that conversations and uh, and, and partnership with the parents in the district would uh, would help greatly in uh, in alleviating any or moving forward, I think many, any mental health issues with any students that have, that arise. And we also need to make sure that the dis- um, that the district reaches out to the parents and makes the parents understand the opportunities available to them to help our students work through any, any tough issues. Um, I want to, I want to be sure that all students are properly represented and that they feel a sense of understanding and support. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is for Dr. Makarajan.
Sorry, I see a doctor.
Oh, thank you. I'm looking down, you're looking up. Yes, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Um, I just wanna say that although it's very, I, I'm a hundred percent on board with keeping families in the loop and, and bringing parents into the resources that exist and the issues going on with their kids. This can be actually quite complicated. For example, if a child is going through a gender identity issue and a parent is not, um, let's say okay with that. And so I think again, using the evidence base for how to address those types of issues and how the school can be a safe place for our kids potentially when families are not, and I want to be on the board to help navigate those admittedly very, very tricky waters.
Thank you. Now the next question for Dr. Nagarajan. Uh, what do you know about issues confronting our district regarding teen drug use, including vaping, as it relates to the functioning of our schools?
Yeah, this is an issue on many folks' mind. I know we had dispensary, um, dispensary ballot recently, um, that was put it down. Um, I know that a number of people are concerned about this kind of being a big presence in our, in our, in our community, the e- easy access of drugs and things like that. I just wanna note that um, obviously our students are underage, but this is a legal substance. So we need to really consider how we are all working as a support team for every student in the school. How are we all educating students in terms of the risks? Um, the risk factors of drug use, how are we making sure that we are equipping our students to make intelligent decisions about that kind of stuff? How do we make sure that we believe in our kids and teach them right and wrong? How do we communicate with teachers, with the community members, parents, families about what is going on with drug use? Drug use is not a new phenomenon, I think in schools. Um, take, you know, that's either here or there, it's just always been a constant um, for schools, but I think there's a lot of education that could be done around that to make sure that we are considering how we are addressing that issue. Again, I would return to the evidence base around this. I know that abstinence education doesn't really work here um, in terms of drug use. So I think considering how we are educating our students about what, what these substances are and how and when, if at all, to engage in that kind of behavior. I think it's a team effort here. I think it's working with everyone involved in our students' life as a support team and making sure students are aware of the potential risks.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Tregelia, what do you know about the issues confronting the district regarding teen drug use, including vaping, as it relates to the functioning of our schools?
Okay, well, I do know that uh, that our superintendent, he went to the Board of Trustees meeting and uh, he spoke out, that's saying that this needs a lot more uh, studies to be done, um, pertaining to cannabis. And uh, and we need to study the impact of how it's, 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 it should, any of this stuff should be implemented. I also know that there has been a huge um, smoking problem within our schools as, as related to me from middle school and high school parents. And uh, we should definitely uh, look for, look to see what studies can be done in order to minimize the impact. And then, and we also have some also some great or outside organizations that are providing help pertaining to these to inform parents on on what to look out for, how, how to do anything. And I believe I'm the only one on this panel that was actually advocating against cannabis within the village. So I'm a bit advocate, advocate of any, any type of uh, drug use pertaining to teens. Um, and in our dis- especially in our district as, as we all have kids who are gonna come through here. And I don't believe any, anything that can alter it, that is mind altering, could be good to young, developing minds and which helps them become critical, independent thinkers. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Hirschberg.
I know there are definitely people in our community who are concerned about my position on the dispensary. I wanna say first and foremost that vaping and substance use are are tragic frankly, and, and addiction rips families apart. And use of substances by anyone under twenty-one, the legal age of use is a hundred percent not okay and potentially preventable. Um, and that we should be using education that has been evidence-based to work with our children and adolescents to learn about these substances. Um, we as a community, or I should, let me just speak for myself as a mother. As a mother, I am far more concerned about the danger of any substance, but certainly cannabis when it is not regulated. Um, the fentanyl lacing, the fact that there are shops in our own village that sell unregulated cannabis is much more concerning to me than a dispensary would be. A dispensary would be um, regulated and a chance for adults to model uh, healthy and responsible use of a legal substance, right? The debate on legalizing marijuana has passed. Our students need evidence-based programming that educates them about substances, about vaping, which is not marijuana. Typically, the vaping issue at school is nicotine, right? Smoking in the bathroom, right? Smoking behind the school, the way that we all had when we were growing up, that is still what's going on. When people say vaping, it is not necessarily cannabis. And kids need to be educated about all of these things, thank you, in a harm reduction manner, not an abstinence-only manner, which is not to be affected.
Mr. Tregelia.
Hi, May, sorry.
Yes, go ahead. Your second rebuttal?
My second, yes. Um, just wanted to know, as someone who holds out researches on drug use, I'm currently doing a research study on opioid use, which, you know, hopefully is nothing ever that our students have to deal with. Um, I agree, harm reduction is kind of the way to do this. Um, I understand that vaping is an issue. I understand that drug use is an issue in school, but we really need to consider how we are educating our students to make sure that they are not engaging in any of this type of activity, to really ensure that they are making, we're raising them to be cognizant, competent decision makers. And if we're not doing that, I think we're not doing the work that the school, that we are trusting the schools to do. Thank you.
Mr. Tregelia, what are your plans to combat bullying related to race, ethnicity, religion, gender, both cis and transgender and sexuality?
Well, uh, my, my plans per se are, it's not, it's not, I don't make, as a member of the board, we don't make the policy of how these, um, of how this was to be, um, portrayed in the schools. It is up to the administration and the superintendent to make the policies. Would I advocate for, would I advocate to push for these policies? Yes, I would. But as a member of the board, it's not our, our position to create a, a policy or an agenda for these. So, um, I would, I would strongly encourage the superintendent to to see, to see that everybody in the school is made to feel welcome and um, to, that the majority of students, teachers and family ag- agree that they should, they should, everybody should be held to, to account for their students, for their kids, for, um, to enhance the education of the, and to go along with the process of teaching each other that we, although we are different, we are all humans. And uh, I, I'm, I'm a firm believer that we should all teach, treat each other equally. Um, there should be no difference between one, one or the other as a, and, and we should, we should separate the differences as we're all human and treat each other as human. So we don't have uh, to, to expa- expand on, on what the differences are, but make sure everybody is uh, is treated as humans.
Thank you. Dr. Hirschberg.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. What are your plans to combat bullying related to race, ethnicity, religion, gender, both cis and transgender and sexuality?
That's a great question. Uh, what I can say is that I would not support a um, kind of colorblind approach, which I believe was what was just described. You know, everyone is human. Certainly, I'm not gonna disagree with that. And yet our community is so rich because of its diversity. And we all come with such different histories and perspectives and certainly recognizing that we all have a common humanity is tremendously important for healing our world, but so is recognizing that different groups of us have been marginalized for different reasons over history and the incredible impact that's made on different communities and in our laws and our systems and being able to give our kids a real, true understanding of the nuances there and teach them to be independent thinkers because they have all of the information. Um, my plans for addressing the bullying, again, certainly, I think there need to be really clear systems in place that address these issues from a disciplinary perspective. But I also think there needs to be, again, education and inclusion of where these beliefs that came from and how bullying happens and, and what is going on for the bully and the bullied. And can we get people help and treat it much more as a call for increased services, being judicious, of course, with the budget, um, than it is a, a sort of, let's just have everybody be the same and love each other and get along, because I think that's just not a realistic or nuanced, or frankly sophisticated enough approach for our amazing community.
Thank you. Dr. Nagarajan?
Could you repeat the question one more time?
Sure. Um, what are your plans to combat bullying related to race, ethnicity, religion, gender, both cis and transgender and sexuality?
Thank you. Uh, this is something that's very near and dear to me, just given that I have been a witness of bullying, but I've also been bullied myself based on my own described characteristics, specifically race and nationality, language. I wanna acknowledge that I think bullying is an issue and I think bullying can happen for a number of reasons, especially a lack of empathy, quite frankly, between, between different students. That doesn't mean that that doesn't exist. It means that we need to create that. The way we would create empathy is through diversity, inclusion, equity practices. Uh, we need to consider ways that students are able to interpersonally relate to each other and find meaning in those relationships. Um, and to do that, we need to in- invest in curriculum that, that, that supports that and to developing those relationships, to people seeing that, you know, that yes, to, to Mr. Tregelia's point, that we are, we are more similar in some ways than we are different. But at the same time, we can hold two truths and it's important to acknowledge that those differences are vast in lots of ways in terms of people's lived experiences. We bring with us um, the history and stories that have shaped who we are for centuries and those are kind of things that inherit in our bodies. And we need to consider the ways in which we, we come to school, so to speak. Um, being able to think about the point about equality, I, I, I think that's a wonderful thing in a vacuum. Um, considering treating everyone equally, but I think we also need to think about equity. Treating people equitably can look a lot different to make sure that every, every student's being able to given the same opportunity to access education. And we need to really consider that and how that's being done. With respect to bullying, I really also think that there needs to be some type of restoration that's done between the bully and the believed such that we feel like those relationships are healed and the community can move further. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Well, considering that it's past the hour, this will be, oh, yes, um, Dr.
I have a lot of left?
Uh, we have one left, yeah.
I just wanna say, um, that I, I actually may see the board slightly differently than Mr. Tregelia in the fact that, of course, we don't set policy and I very much, you know, have faith in the superintendent and the uh, and the administration to do that, but I do believe we influence policy and play a role in it, hence the policy committee. And I would actually be excited to bring my particular expertise to the board so that I can voice that and share that and not simply be a sounding board who doesn't actually give of the skill set that I have.
Thank you. All right, this will, uh, yes, Mr. Tregelia.
Yes, I'd like to use my last rebuttal, please. Okay, I, I don't believe I mentioned anything uh, as, as taking a colorblind approach to treat uh, to treat others equally despite any of our differences. Bullying takes on many different forms and often it's a learned behavior at home and having parents workshops could also help parents set a better example for their children. And also within my own family, um, my, my wife co-sponsored the International Fair a couple, a couple of weeks ago, which had uh, which had a huge turnout, very, very over four hundred members of the community. And even Paul Finer mentioned in uh, in a letter to the editor for April twenty-third and his, his remark was the event was one of the best programs dealing with diversity I have ever attended during my tenure of, as town supervisor. And he's been town supervisor for over thirty years.
Thank you, Mr. Trege.
Thank you.
All right, um, our last question and then we'll have closing statements. How will you communicate better with the community, parents, students, residents, taxpayers? And the first uh, person is Dr. Hirschberg.
Say the question again, how will I communicate better?
Yeah, better or at all with the community, parents, students, residents, taxpayers.
Okay, I, I'm gonna say at all, cuz I don't know who the better, this is to better. Like, okay, and we all want this. Let's, let me start there. We, we all absolutely want communication to be very good um, between members of the Board of Education and all of the other stakeholders involved, whether it's parents, um, administrators, faculty, and I pride myself frankly on being an open and honest communicator. Um, I, I give talks as part of my career. Often, I work with families from all different backgrounds. I think there's never a harm in being honest, straightforward, complimentary. Speaking of complimentary, I absolutely heard wonderful things, um, Mr. Tregelia, about the International Fair. Um, I wasn't able to make it, but I think it's terrific that your wife uh, did that initiative. And I think we all need to focus on being collaborative when it comes to, um, decision-making in our district. There was an example recently, I know many parents are frustrated by the recent change in schedule, for example, in Springhurst. Um, it seemed as though we got an email without any sort of context or um, background or, or ability to give input. And I would really uh, be interested as a Board of Education member in coming up with some systems so that we wouldn't have to reinvent the wheel each time, but really could have a system of decision-making when there, when there is some sort of major change that's going to impact all members of our community um, in terms of whether it's traffic or safety or, you know, that, that there be a system in place whereby we, we are able to obtain. Uh, thank you, I know it's time, but just able to obtain input from different people and then make decisions accordingly and collaboratively.
Thank you. Mr. Tregelia, communication with parents, students, residents and taxpayers?
Uh, I believe uh, communication is key amongst the Board of, amongst the Board members. I'm a, I'm a parent, I'm a volunteer in town organizations and I'm a hundred percent approachable. So if anybody has uh, any questions, um, I could always be uh, approached um, to relay to the superintendent, to additional board members. And uh, I welcome the community feedback in open conversations to see how I can best help. Um, also, um, I, I believe uh, the new superintendent, he, he took a step in the right direction. He had the forum, um, transparency and com- and communication to the community was one of the biggest, one of the things I was advocating for in the past also. So, um, we, we, as, as a community, we have to come more, more together. And that's what uh, that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking to do is bring the community back together. And that's why I say it's, it's okay for us to agree to disagree. But we still have to maintain our cordiality, our civility and respect for our members, even though we have disagreements. Ninety percent, we're probably, we probably agree on ninety percent of everything. The ten percent doesn't make us all bad people. So we have to, we have to continue to come back together and have these open, honest conversations. And, and to have the difficult discussions as everybody wants to have, but the second these difficult discussions begin, um, nobody wants to actually have them. So I, I, I continue, I can, I will continue to push for um, to be more open and honest and continue the dialogue within the community. Thank you.
Doctor Nagarajan?
Uh, this question's an exciting one because to me, as a researcher, I say, well, what's not working? How do we know? We need to ask people. So um, what I would first do is ask people. I think it's important to actually talk with number of folks and figure out what's working well, what's really not working well and how can we improve? And that's the first step, honestly, to really understand. And that, I think, speaks to everyone's And that's the first step, honestly, to really understand. And that, I think, speaks to everyone's common goal here is to make sure we're more transparent and that we are communicating as well as we could be and that um that we're all on the same team. So how do we actually make sure that everyone's gaining the information that they're getting, that they need to get? Um, I think that's the first step. And then the second thing I, you know, I think is important here is to speak to more of a collaborative decis- decision-making framework that includes parents, families, and that, taxpayers' laws. You know, how do we create feedback loops between what's communicated out to the community and what kind of comes back to those who are in roles of decision-making power? And that's important. It's part of my work now is to create feedback loops for organizations to make sure that that kind of feedback is going back to the folks who are making policies. Um, so it's something that's very important to me, and I want to make sure that as a person who is a part of a growing community of jobs, um, in terms of people of color or BIPOC folks that are that are here, I want to make sure that we're accessing and assessing really what everyone seems to think and getting those kind of things back to the board or to the superintendent and making sure those things come back out to folks. So trying to find ways that we can have more democratic and accessible ways to see, engage, what people are thinking is is extremely important. I think we all agree on that. So looking forward to hopefully finding, if elected, finding ways to do that efficiently. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we will have our closing statements. Uh, each candidate has one minute to close and we'll uh begin with Dr. Nagarajan.
Great. Well, I thank you all for joining today. Thank you, Susan, both Susans, excuse me, for um helping us navigate the conversation today. Thank you all for considering my candidacy for the Dowsbury Board of Education. I, along with fellow, Dr. Rebecca Hirschberg, possess the expertise, um, skills and commitment um that are required to advocate for evidence-based curriculum, to make data-informed decisions, um, to engage the community in constructive dialogue about how our district can continuously improve and support the academic and socio-emotional well-being of our students. Um, please ensure your voice is heard and vote on Tuesday, May sixteenth, in the election to be held in the Dowsbury High School Gymnasium. In the intervening time, I am certainly accessible. Um, you'll probably find me on Facebook or out at Will Park most days with my kids. So you are welcome to approach me and talk about any concerns you may have or ask any questions you may have. I certainly welcome them. And again, thank you so much for for joining today and um for for your participation. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Hirschberg.
Thank you, um, everyone for being here. Again, it's not nothing. We are all devoted to our children, to our community, to our schools. I myself am by no means someone dripping with extra time and uh energy, but I feel it's tremendously important that both I and Dr. Nagarajan with our um particular sets of skills and expertise and perspectives give of ourselves to join the Board of Education at this particular moment in time, which is a divisive moment, which is a moment that calls for evidence-based interventions, which is a time that calls for increased emphasis on students' emotional well-being and mental health. Obviously, never sacrificing academic learning, um, and learning the rigors of independent thinking. I also am available, Facebook, community, email, please reach out. I would love to have conversations with individual people. I would love to already start polling people as to what issues are. I know people, again, are worried and upset. Thank you for time about the recent Springhurst schedule change. And so that would be a place to start.
Thank you. Mr. Traglia. Would you please unmute, Mr. Traglia?
Uh, I would, I would like to, again, thank the moderators, moderators along with the League of Women's Voters of the River Towns, the PTSA for this opportunity, and the audience for taking the time to watch on the Sunday evening. Uh, with my accounting experience, being on the board of a another educational institution, working with many outside organizations has honed my leader, has honed my leadership qualities and my ability to find solutions through diligence and working as part of a diversified team. My goal is to properly vet all policies to make sure they are beneficial to all students. There will be no greater advocate for students, teachers, athletics, and theater clubs and voices of my fellow community members. I'm very approachable and uh anybody that has any questions, it will, is more than happy. I'll be more than happy to take any questions, discussion, or anything. I will not um post or debate anybody on Facebook as uh as this doesn't lead to coming together. This we, I believe we really need to get to know each other once again um and coming face to face. Facebook is not a a place for debate. We're trying to bring communities together, and that's what I'm trying to do. I wish all candidates good luck and please go vote on May sixteenth. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I uh, that brings us to the close. I really want to thank all the candidates for your very thoughtful, informative, and respectful comments. I think your community was very well-served tonight and uh in helping them make this important decision on their school board. I want to remind all the audience again to vote, both for the candidates and the budget uh is on the ballot on May sixteenth from seven AM to nine PM in the high school gymnasium. Thank the audience for their participation and all the people who submitted uh the questions um that helped us along tonight. So I wish you all a good night and thank you again. Good night.